All right. Good morning and welcome to Trinity County Board of Supervisors on November 9. Please join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every justice for all.
All right, we'll move into public comments. This time this proclamation from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda, however, the chair may refer to the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-ups or schedule the matter on a subsequent fourth agenda. Good morning, Diane.
Good morning, Diane Richards, Hayford. I want to put you on notice that I actually requested of Elections Department, I filed a Open Records Act request for information, all the information on the new voting equipment, the systems. The county council replied that they needed a whole month to get that to me. It's unacceptable because the Central Committee needs to get the information and then we need to get turned on that equipment. So we would like it to be much faster than waiting until December 16th. Also, I would like to announce that if there are any irregularities during this election, there will be an election contest filed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kate Graves from Lewiston. I was reading, I just finished a book on, it happened around the time of our founding is when it was written, it's based on letters and such, and it just strikes me how important their oath was and how important swearing was. I mean, they even had traders who secretly went to other organizations to undermine people and they still took oath and swore in and they were expected to uphold it. And it just strikes me how an oath means nothing today. I don't know if any of you realize you even took an oath or if it was just Charlie Brown adult talk, wah 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 wah. You swore to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States and California, and none of you do it. You blatantly don't do it. And it's a shame that we no longer have the character in our people and the quality of people that that matters. So that's just sad that all of that is gone.
Jim Stillwell from Hayford, California. I'd just like to bring up to you the different chapters and paragraphs in the Constitution of the State of California. I agree with Kate that they swore an oath to uphold and defend the Constitution and they're just shining it on. That's the reason why our people, our people, not yours, defected from the other countries to get legal justice, low taxes. "The amount of proposed assessment for each identified parcel shall be calculated." That means all the money that's spent out on it has to be calculated by a certified calculator engineer. Written notice by mail of the proposed assessment, total amount thereof chargeable to the entire district, the amount chargeable to the owner's parcel, calculated parcel, and duration of payments. You've got us taxpayers at the distance edge, you're charging us for something we don't even know what we're getting taxed for. The, it's a vigilante tax for the hospital where a bunch of people got together and said, "We gotta have a hospital here." And the proposed pay us back of that money would be the PUD group soviet's here in Trinity County instead of the whole county being liable for that, that tax that they put before us. It's unconstitutional, unjustifiable, and illegal. I think that somebody else may be up here and maybe they can state something better than I can.
Okay, anyone else? All right. Before we move on to our presentations, I do need to report out from our last closed session at the last meeting, so item 6.1, existing litigation, direction was given. Item 6.2, CAL eval, no action or direction was given. 6.3, closed session labor negotiations, direction was given. 6.4, closed session real property negotiators, direction was given. All right, moving on to presentations, item 1.1, we're going to adopt a proclamation design, designating November 2019 as National Veterans and Military Families Month. I also want to thank Supervisor Chadwick for bringing this to my attention. Apparently, November has become National Veterans Family Month for a couple of years. I also want to remind the board, because I think the only one that might be on the board at this time would be Supervisor Friendly. During a tight, tight budget session, a few years back, the board determined, elected to pay their own retirement cost to fund a very limited budget Veteran Service Officer at the time. So I think this board has always been very supportive of veterans. We have a high percentage of veterans in this county, and I think this is very appropriate to recognize our veterans and their families that reside in Trinity County. So with that, I would like to read this proclamation. Proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity, recognizing November 2019 as National Veterans and Military Families Month. Whereas a large number of veterans reside in Trinity County, at each Veterans Day, we come together to pay tribute to the men and women who have worn the uniform of the United States Armed Forces. Americans commemorate those who have risked their lives to preserve the liberty of our nation and families who support them. And whereas now in each November, we give pause to the great contribution to both our veteran, veterans and military families in Trinity County. Whereas veterans make our county stronger by applying their military experience in their post-service lives, Trinity County is lucky to have many of the veterans employed within county government and benefit upon their leadership and training. We also are fortunate to have veterans residing in our county, helping neighbors and communities in need and serving wherever and whenever it is necessary. Whereas military families too have a special duty to their country. Military spouses, for example, stand in full support of their service members, often putting a career on hold to move to another installation to juggle life's complexities mid-employment. From settling their children in a new school to helping their service member parents navigate care when their loved one is far from home, military families never stop giving. Whereas as a county, while we should give our thanks and recognition and support to our veteran and military families year-round, it is especially vital to do so during National Veteran and Military Family Month each November. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of County of Trinity to hereby proclaim November as National Veterans and Military Families Month. The Board encourages all communities throughout the county to acknowledge and honor the service sacrifices and contributions of veterans and military families for what they have done and what they do every day to support our great nation. Questions, motions, comments?
Motion.
All right.
Motion to approve as presented.
A second. All right, I have a motion in a second. Please pull the board. Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Supervisor Bentley?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Aye. All right, thank you, board. Speaking of veterans, do we have anything to announce?
We have a partial announcement, yes.
If you can't yet, that's okay.
Well, we have made an offer to a Veteran Service Officer. I just can't say who that person is at this time or do a background, but very impressed with qualification and I think this person did an amazing job for the county, representing the county and serve our veterans. So yes, we will, in the next hopefully month, we'll have a full-time Veteran Service Officer.
Great. Great, great. All right, moving on to 1.2, Trinity County Transportation Commission, receive a presentation from Caltrans Acting Project Manager Nathan Sellers regarding SB 45 Transportation Improvement Program Updates for Trinity County, no fiscal impact.
Morning. I wanted to introduce Nathan Sellers from Caltrans, but first I wanted to take a minute to explain why Caltrans comes in annually to show us the projects that they're working on. These are projects that you have programmed through the RTIP and are in the STIP or that we produce county months to do certain improvements on Caltrans facilities. And by law, they're required to come in once a year and give us an update as to what's going on, and this is that update. So with that, I'll turn over Nathan and then let you know where we're at with the projects.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me here today. So our reports are as presented in the agenda, a couple of comments. So far, we've spent our state shop program funds. We haven't spent any of the RTIP or STIP funding as recognition. That money is set aside for the construction capital part of the project. Currently, this Tom Dell project that you have up on the screen here is in our Office of Engineering. They do the final review of the plans and make sure all the plans and specs are in order before it goes out to bid. That process is supposed to be completed by January of this, well, I guess January of 2020. It will go out to bid and the contract will be awarded for the construction season of this next spring of 2020. And that is all on track with the schedule that we have for the project, so everything's going well with that. The other project that we have a report for is Denny Road, not Turn Lane. That one is a little earlier in the process, is going to go into what we call PAED, which is all of the preliminary engineering and environmental studies. And again, that's in the same phase of the spending as well. We're still spending our shop minor funds, the state funds. Construction of that work isn't to occur until the spring of 2021, at which time we'll be spending some of those county contributions on the construction portion of the project. And it is also on track with the project schedule as well. So do you have any specific questions about any of these projects or any other projects that we have going on over here in this county?
You'll be at Hayford tonight from 5:00 to 6:30 to talk about our specific community? Is that correct?
I wasn't aware of that meeting.
Okay.
I can be, I can find out more information about that.
No, it was scheduled and posted. I thought it was you though, so.
Okay. No, unfortunately it's not me, sorry to annoy you. Such a big organization. You know, some other updates I did want to share though, since these projects do affect you guys quite a bit. The Dry Whiskey Project that we have in the Whiskey Town area, the speed reductions are going to be reduced during the next week or so, and then the construction's going to be fully completed by the first or second week of December. So that should be all open and done. And that's the same with the Car Fire Reconstruction Project that we've been working in there, that one's going to be wrapped up here in the next couple of weeks as well. So there should be unencumbered access to ready for the holidays.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions, surprise for us?
So on the Dry Whiskey Project, and maybe you weren't involved in this part of it, but we have a, in the next two years, a fiber line going down that road. And so you guys have spent a lot of money making it beautiful and then just for us to tear it up in the next couple of years.
Hopefully that will be along the shoulder and not in the paid section.
Well, of course it'll be in the shoulder, but you guys went right out to the edge. So I guess my question is, why isn't there better coordination or is it not that big a deal?
Well, I mean, it does cost taxpayer dollars to do things and redo things, so it is kind of a big deal. But a lot of these processes and the funding that's involved with this work has a lot of time involved with it. And if we spent a lot of time waiting for all the ducks to be in a row on some of these things, we wouldn't be able to complete some of the work that we have. And that Dry Whiskey Project initially was going to be much, much bigger and was scaled back quite a bit. And I'm not sure if that utility, the new utility efforts, is that AT&amp;T or Charter? Do you know?
No, it's not either one of those.
Yeah, I'm not sure what coordination was involved with them during that construction project.
Okay.
But yeah, it would be nice if a lot of these things could be better coordinated together, but unfortunately, like I said, the funding and schedules, it can be very difficult at times.
Okay, thank you.
And Supervisor Graves, I do have information on that. They certainly have been in talks, maybe not with this gentleman, but members at the office. It was their understanding it was not going to happen, but I think as the gentleman pointed out, they do, Caltrans has limitations on funding and when they have to spend it. I believe this project was part of the fire issue as well to rehab after fire, am I correct?
Well, there was, yeah, there was two projects going on at the same time. One of them was the fire route out, it was to address that emergency work. The other was the Dry Whiskey, which had been in the planning process for several years.
So the provider was under the understanding this payment part was not going to happen for a little bit, but then it caught them off guard too. So I think it relates to funding, as he pointed out, and when they have to spend it, unfortunately. Right?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on to consent calendar. Any items, these items include routine, non-controversial matters, and if we acted upon the Board by a one real call motion, a member of the board staff or public may request an item to be pulled and considered separately. Board members? Madam Chair? Members of the public? Sorry, I thought you were going to ask staff, so I was a little slow. I'd like to pull 2.3. Anybody else pulling it up? We're not, are you?
Staff request that you pull 2.08.
2.8 or 2.08?
2.8.
Yes, okay.
I would like to pull 2.2.
Anybody else? Okay, with the remainder, I would entertain a motion.
So may.
Second.
Supervisor Brooks?
Aye.
Supervisor Bentley?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris? Yes. All right. Item 2.2, appoint Charles Holt House to the Fish and Game Advisory Commission for the position of at-large to serve a four-year term expiring November 13, 2023, as requested by the commission, fiscal impact.
Question is, excuse me, I don't know Mr. Holt House, so maybe I was not here for the vetting of him, but what is his background with Fish and Game or TRRP?
There is some information in backup on the item. Supervisor Bentley?
I can speak to this. I attended the Fish and Game Advisory Board. This was a unanimous vote to bring this gentleman into the Fish and Game Advisory Board, and I think he's very qualified. The commissioners felt the same way and they would like to see him appointed. So there is a couple pieces of backup there, and I would appreciate it if you would read it up. If you had a question about this, I also would have appreciated if you would have come to the Fish and Game Advisory Board or at least pay attention to their postings.
You got it. Thank you.
Chairman Chair, if I would, I would like to also say that Charlie's in charge of the Trinity County RCND, and he's been facilitating the CWPPs throughout, and he just hosted one in Dallas City.
Great. Okay, thank you both. With that, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve as presented.
A second. All in paper?
Aye.
All right, anyone opposed? Seeing none, so moved. Item 2.3, appoint Keith Wright to the Trinity County Water Works District One Board of Directors to an unexpired term expiring on December 31, 2020. Okay, Kate Graves from Lewiston. So we have an ongoing battle with the Board of Supervisors because they claim they have nothing to do with the elections yet, but here's something that has to do with elections on their agenda, because you do. You legally and by law, you have authority and jurisdiction and responsibility over elections. The Elections Officer Digest, 2018, published by Alex Padilla, Secretary of State, and Becerra, who's the State Attorney General, which you guys have been given a copy of, I mean, just one of the things states, Election Code 319. Election Board means a Board of Supervisors of each county. That's you guys. It also goes into, it could be the city council or other governing body of the city and any other officer with whom similar powers and duties are given by any charter. None of that applies to us. What applies to us is means the Board of Supervisors of each county. That's why the election stuff comes to you, that's why it has to come to you, that's why when it doesn't, it's a problem. I would like to know if you're going to have the other people that are appointed because you guys gave a pass on having an election in November. For all those people, are you going to bring them on and put them on your agenda, even though you've already made your error, to rectify the situation that you've skipped an election? The notice wasn't given in a timely manner that you were doing this and you ended up doing it, that's backwards. So I would like everybody that you're doing this with and extending their terms to be placed on the agenda, at least as an after-the-fact correction. I'm also wondering, because when you guys certify the elections, that's also another thing that's not a courtesy to come here. You guys certify the elections, and I'm just letting you know again, I know you were given this digest, and it would be great if you read it. You expect people to read Fish and Game Advisory Commission notices. I expect you guys to read what was sent to you specifically. Thank you. Supervisor Chadwick, thank you, have your light on.
Yes, Madam Chair.
The other thing that wasn't brought up is that in the past, these have always been done in county matters. Why is this on the consent agenda?
Any comments, questions?
No, for the Weaverville, I'd just like to remind the board that this water works district is a dependent special district. More papers are not elected by the board, by the general public, but are appointed by the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Supervisor Chadwick.
Yes, Madam Chair. Thomas Lewis was a longtime community member and he passed away. Keith Wright is just taking the rest of his, his term, his not taken pass.
Okay. Great, thank you for the information, Supervisor.
And I'd also like to speak to Keith Wright. He is a member of the community, he's a strong member of the community, he participates, and I think he'd be an excellent choice.
Great.
Before this, I applaud the district for moving forward with this.
All right. Any other comments, questions? None, I would entertain a motion.
So may.
Second. All in paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none, so may. Thank you. All right, moving on to 2.8, under the Trinity County Transportation Commission. Adopt a resolution which approves the 2020 Regional Transportation Improvement Program for the 2020 State Transportation Improvement Program and authorizes the Executive Secretary to sign all related documents. No impact to the general fund, revenue in the amount of $3,803,000 for specified transportation projects. Morning, Rick.
Morning. After the item was submitted, there is a request by Caltrans through the project study report, which gives the final numbers for the project, to slightly modify the dates in which we collect. They still want $750,000 for the turnout projects in Bellemoma, but they would like the dates of the distribution to be different than what is shown on, on Exhibit A of the statute report. Just simple changes. They would like to see 15,000 in 2021, 133,000 in 2223, and 600,000 in 2024. I'd just like permission to make up for this. Thank you.
Could you go over those again? It took me a while to get that up.
Sorry, last, last line where it says Caltrans down under turnout.
Yes.
In 2021, they'd like 15,000 where it says 118. We would cross out 2122 and add 133,000 in 2323 and 600,000 in 2324.
That still adds up to the 750?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, questions from the public? All right.
I'll move to accept with the noted changes.
Second.
Okay.
I didn't get it off, I was.
Question or second? Please pull the board to you. Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Brooks?
Aye.
Supervisor Bentley?
Aye.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris? Yes. All right, thank you. Look at that. It is 9:30. The Portman Department has a record, don't go away.
I'm excited to report that we finished the first phase of the jail project, and we have poured the pad for the jail, so the foundation is done, and we have gone to what we call the vertical phase, which means rebuilding the building. If you actually drive a highway three, you can start seeing it come up out of the ground, and it's been moving along really good. They're hoping to actually have the first part of the front part of it done before the end of the year, just for the walls, not the sewn or stuff like that. But they're at a point now where they can easily continue to work through the winter and continue on to get to the completion date sometime in November of this year, or next year, sorry. So that was a very exciting thing to see, especially the other day, seeing some of the ruins that, you know, you've seen on paper a lot, but actually seeing being constructed. Then also, I'd like to announce, or reiterate what Supervisor Chadwick had said, that there is a meeting this evening at the Hayford High School, and it will there is a meeting this evening at the Hayfork High School and it will be going over the Highway 3 Transportation Concept Report, which is a 20-year plan assessing both current and future operational improvements on Highway 3, from 36th to the county line. The meeting is from 5:00 to 6:30 at Hayfork High School.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, I have a question for Rick to follow up with. I just, Rick, I'm following up on the Van Dusen road speed limit. Whether it's 25 and I think we've had a discussion about it, just where are you with the letter to the CHP or?
Yeah, I was, I'm going to be talking to the commander about it. It's our belief that it's 20.
This is going on four weeks and you just need to work on it. Either get a survey done to get it up to them and to sheriff so they are all in agreement that the speed limit is there or not. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Rick? All right, thank you, Rick. Anyone else? Department heads.
Hey, what kind of news?
Yeah, it's going on.
Good morning, Madam Chair. I'm Detective Board and fiscal coordinator. I'm pleased to announce that Trinity County has received the Government Finance Office Association Award for the next consecutive year. This award represents the highest level of accounting and reporting that any government institution can receive. In the United States, only 4% out of all your county, city, school, special districts can receive this award, nor one of the 4%. So I'd like to thank my staff for all their hard work. So, Special Assistant, Christine Gaffney, Vicky Wayhill, Buck Simmons, and our consultant, of course, Craig Goodman. I'd also like to clarify a little misunderstanding out in the public as far as statement that was made that auditors come in, they give you a clean opinion, and here, here's your word. It's not that easy, unfortunately. We are being audited at this time. We have auditors in our office pulling staff right now. But once they get done and we get a clean opinion is our goal every year. If we get that clean opinion, we can take our caper and submit it to the Government Finance Office of Administration. What I found was really interesting, because I did a little bit more research, was that no auditor in California will audit any California county's caper. It will be sent out to Virginia, Washington, any other place because they feel that they can play favoritism. So that person actually reviews their caper, so they go through them number by number, making sure that all the numbers ticketized throughout the whole report. And then they send their notes back to the GFOA for their review to determine whether or not the county qualifies for the award. In addition, this award does help with borrowing and financing, refinancing, just like we did with refinancing of the COP 2005. The majority of the information that's bank was in the caper already, so that saves the county a lot of work. Plus, they can see what the county's trends are for the past 10 years because of the statistical information that's provided in that report. So I'd not only like to thank my staff that I already did, but I'd also like to thank all the other county departments because without their help and work and meeting our deadlines, we wouldn't be able to accomplish this. So I think this has a lot for Trinity County, even the 4% of the United States of getting this award.
Great job, Angie. Again, thank you. I have a comment from Supervisor Chadwick and then CIO Coons has something on behalf of the board administration. Are you and your department supervisor Chadwick?
Two things. The GFOA, if you could explain to everyone and enlighten us on what that acronym is. And also, we were so busy clapping that I think the first three or maybe four people's names was under applause. So if you could reintroduce them?
Sure. So government, GFOA stands for Government Finance Officers Association, and which we are a member of. And as far as the staff, this is Christine Gaffney, my assistant auditor. This is Pam Coffey, account tech. Deanna Katoni, supervising account tech. Vicky Wayhill, account tech. Buck Simmons, accountant, and Craig Goodman, our consultant.
Great. Thank you again.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Attorney CIO Coons.
Yes, and on behalf of the board, thank the staff. Be sorry, Buck and Craig, but there's a pizza party coming. There's a pizza party. It's usually your date.
Oh.
So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good work, everyone. Thank you.
Sure. Come here, guys. I guess we're getting our picture done.
You want me to stand in front?
Yeah. Yeah.
Good job.
Good job, everyone.
I know, you took Mike's place and I was begging him all the time, so.
It's not my fault she hid behind me. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other, follow that one up. Terry?
Teasing you.
Good morning.
Good morning. We don't have an award, but we like to think that we do have a really good topic to present today. I am coming this morning, so I wanted to touch base and make you aware of a couple things. We did have a couple issues with our, well, I guess like a nice way to put that, we've been experiencing some challenges with our new property tax system. With that, part of the challenges we had were with our special assessments districts, fire in particular, some of the real beef work. What took place was that there was two issues basically, but one is that the Hayfork fire was, the description was labeled incorrectly. And then on Weaverville fire, that did not, wasn't applied at all. So when we discovered that, the auditors had worked together to, so we could get those bills remailed and sent out to everybody. So it's caused quite a bit of confusion, but to clarify, Hayfork amount is correct. It is not going to Weaverville. It is covened properly in the system, but just to make you aware that that took place, something a little bit out of our control, but nevertheless, we figured that out and won't have that issue in the future, I believe. Another thing I wanted to kind of touch base and let you know is that we have, we are kind of implementing a couple different payment options that the public has mentioned that they would like, that would be less expensive other than just credit cards. So more expensive to pay with an E-check and so the fee, it's a flat fee versus a percentage, which is what the credit cards are now. I don't know if that'll happen before the December 10th, but before the 10th, it will be in place. Another thing that I want to touch base and make you all aware of is that I have been approached with some various financial needs and some of you may, from other departments in the school district, and some of you may or may not be aware that last year, we implemented a debt management policy. So before we would come to the board for any direction, we would have the debt management policy meeting and then we would come forth to you all to present anything that they mentioned that needs, the needs are. The school district is a little bit different and so there's several things that need to take place with that and so I will bring that back to you. I'm thinking more than likely it'll be something that'll take place in the December meeting. I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up that that's coming down the line, so.
Great. I have a question from Supervisor Brown.
Well, it's more of a kind of a statement. There's not much you can do about it, but I do want you to know that of my seven property tax bills, I only received two. And I called the department, just as a citizen, and they said I had to go online and reprint stuff up, which will take me some time. But I'm very familiar with that process, so it's no big deal to me. But I think it really needs to be out there. Maybe I'm the only property that didn't get sent their things, but I think it's really important for the public to know, to pay attention to their bill and just not sign bills off that they may be missing the paperwork. So hopefully, in the end, that you guys work with them, people didn't receive bills because I'm sure there'll be people that didn't, won't pay their bill because they didn't receive the bill.
Normally, I apologize for inconvenience on that, but normally the policy is that so if you didn't receive the bill and you're calling us within, you know, right after we've sent it, if we're months out, then they would normally say if you'd like to duplicate bills, then you would go online and print it, but that's not normally what the policy is for initially, so I could have them send that to you.
Okay, that would be wonderful. But I don't, I didn't want special treatment. I just wanted to know what to do, but it's more importantly.
We would do that for everybody, though, so if it's within that point, so it's not just special treatment. So if you contact them and say you didn't have that, we would send that to you.
Great.
But you didn't.
That's what I'm saying. I apologize for that. We do have a new person on board, but that is what the policy is, so if you don't have that, we would resend that to you.
So, but I think we're, my larger point is that there's going to be issues out there and let's please be flexible with the people that aren't getting bills out there. Maybe I'm the only five that didn't get sent. I don't know. So, thank you.
Thanks for the update. Thank you. Any other department head? No? All right. County Administrative Officer.
The only thing to report is last Friday, which was what, the 15th, Sheriff Saxon and Tiny Director Hunter and I were invited to a TAA kind of question forum. Attended that, was well-attended and I'm hoping we answer all the questions they were asking. So I appreciate the opportunity to address the public with their concerns.
Thank you. Anybody? Margaret, anything? No? Okay. For Supervisor, Supervisor Chadwick.
I forgot my ledger, so I'm going to try to go off of memory. November 5th, there was an LPC meeting I attended. The 6th, I also attended the TCAA, which is a new formation of the legal growers. And we also had the WFPP. I don't know the dates because I don't have my ledger. I apologize. Disaster Council, NorCal EMS down in Reading. Dr. Kimball was there. That was the first time he's been there in person. He's the new director. We had a COC and CAP. Where, as you know, Trinity County is just really starting to build that up locally at our local level. And that's all I can remember off my memory. I apologize.
All right. Supervisor Brown?
Yeah, I attended the River, I mean Supervisor Brown, the River Restoration Refinements Meeting in Reading on Friday, where after many months of hard work, we came up with a mission statement, which surprisingly enough, was to get more fish into the river. And that's my only out of county travel.
All right, Supervisor Brown.
Out of county travel. Yesterday was burning for PSA AAA, PSA 2 AAA.
Supervisor Brown.
On the 15th, I attended the TMC meeting in Reading and learned a lot about the history of the TRRP. As Keith said, the mission statement was developed. Talked about goals, objectives, accountability, and measurement methods were a big issue that were brought up and finding a mechanism to actually validate the effectiveness of the program, things like that. It's a little, not disappointing, but there's no, there were no members of the public there and I've heard lots of concerns regarding the program during the last year of my participation on the board. And we just encourage anyone that does have feelings about the program to reach out to me or to reach out to Keith so I can know how the public in my district is feeling at least about some of the issues. Yesterday on the 18th, I was lucky to spend four hours of the day with Mr. Tippet, traveling the downriver roads from Burt Ranch towards Sawyer. Four hours. We didn't even leave that area. So we went to Denny, we went around the Sawyer Loop. We talked about striping and grinding and some of the future projects that Caltrans has down the pipeline. I learned about what makes a fence legal and illegal. I learned about the FEMA process for road repairs and we talked about some roads that were under the impression of being county maintained, but they're not. So there may be some disappointed constituents in the Sawyer area soon. On Friday, I was luckily able to attend the TAA meeting at the chapel. To me, it was very eye-opening. I feel like it was a very valuable conversation to have. It's unfortunate that it hasn't happened sooner than now. Like three years ago would have been a great time to really encourage those types of open forums with the cultivators and TAA. And I feel like there needs to be a kind of a meet the grower night where growers can come and people can go and ask them any kinds of questions they want. There's a lot of curiosity, there's a lot of misconceptions. So that was nice and the Wilderness Ad Hoc Committee.
We're not quite there yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
That's all.
You'll have your chance. Let's see, early November, attended a meeting on the coast on the state's cultural districts. I know the Weaverville Chamber and the Arts Council applied for one a couple of years ago and they came in kind of like on the second phase, so we went to learn about what you can gain and how do you apply for it again. Also, something I forgot to mention last time, the collaborative and the board supported a letter, if you recall, on the Marina fees. That needed to be, the legislation needed to be extended. Congressman Huffman, working with Congressman Lamal, are working because it affects both their districts to extend that legislation. We'll know more as it progresses. Also, wanted to also, something I forgot, I thanked a few people on those volunteer groups who lit up Weaverville with their lights hanging throughout downtown. One entity I forgot to mention was Velocity was helpful in hanging those lights, takes all kinds of equipment to reach those high places throughout downtown. And I think that is it. And Supervisor Brown, I would also add, TAA worked with a hunter group of growers and a animal group about three, four years ago in a very close way, so that has been done in the past.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to ad hoc committees. Commercial cannabis ordinance amendments. No, we're still, we're still in a holding pattern at the moment. Anything else? I mean, no? Okay. Federal lands legislation.
Need a saw. What's up? Need a saw.
Okay. Keith and I discussed this briefly last week. Couple things we discussed. One, we'd like to try to organize kind of the agency get-together, a lot of the agencies. And I don't know if this is possible legally, but this is just sharing. Opportunity for the agencies to be in a room where the concerned members of the public can go and address some of the key issues about the wilderness bill that are a concern to them. We've reached out to some of Huffman's staff and they're aware of this request. We haven't heard back yet, it was about a month ago or something. We did receive a letter. The board received a letter from Huffman's office and they have reorganized some of the wording in the bill to address some of the concerns they felt they heard from the public over the last couple of months or, is that July we had the meeting here, I think? So three of the main things were the clarity in prioritizing the South Fork Mazur restoration area as the first objective within the bill. The second thing was acknowledging that prescribed burning would be the priority technique to be used within the restoration areas and it would be up to the acting force deputy at the time. And the third thing, which I thought was really neat, was that they allowed for a potential for new grazing annual licenses within the restoration areas for weed control or forest control, deforest measures. So that wasn't something that they had allowed before and I feel that that was a nice big deal to open that up for people to get annual grazing permits in those areas. And then Keith and I discussed, you know, if we can't seem to find a formal opinion to take on this, you know, we're more than happy to put it to the November ballot and we can see how voters feel about the bill and try to get some clarity on how the majority of the county feels about this. of the county feels about this.
All right. We will take a quick five-minute break before we move into county matters.
Good, how about you?
Good.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi. Good morning.
Nice to meet you.
I'm sorry.
How are you?
Good morning.
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 Mary.
Oh, yeah.
What's Mary?
I think Mary is, except Mary at Hayfork today.
I don't know.
High school.
Caltrans.
EIR.
Yes.
Environmental impact support.
Yeah.
Planing.
She's a scar.
She's a bottom.
Oh.
Some banana flavored pistachios.
Well, I have a little gum flavor.
Yeah.
I like to see some.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
We are back, moving on to county matters, these items include non-routine or controversial matters that are listed alphabetically by department, a member of the Board or staff may request that an item be heard on an order. I will be moving 4.2 in front of 4.1, and those are the only two items under county matters. With that, we will move on to, let me, I'll read the item, and then you guys can jump in. 4.2, acknowledge signature verification certificate for Measure A, Trinity County Cannabis Tax Measure in Pursuit of California Constitution Article 9, C-section, oh, eight, sorry, C-section 2 in Electronics Elections Code 9118B, submit the ordinance without alteration to the voters per Election Code 1405. I understand.
Madam Chair, I've been waiting, anticipating this clarity from the FPPC, and I was lucky to receive my letter this morning. I had requested information on three topics, specifically, let me pull up my information here, specifically the participation in the rezone, the mine's rezone, second, the participation in the draft EIR report, and third, the current cannabis tax that is in front of the Board. Although I could read you the full eight-page response, I will spare you and conclude that on the rezone, I am allowed to participate in that decision. Regarding the EIR, I am allowed to participate in certain segments of that discussion and decisions. The current tax initiative, I am not able to participate currently, so I will be recusing myself from the tax initiative.
All right. Thank you.
I will also, I will also request, and I will recuse myself, simply because of certain items that come up that looks like you're going to be confronted with during this item, and I'll be stepping out.
All right, thank you both for noticing.
And I are going to have a party.
Clarifying, Supervisor Brown.
I guess, Council, maybe I'm jumping the gun here, do, does this take a four-person vote?
No, you'll need, you'll need all three to vote unanimously.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. As I pointed out, we are, so Margaret, why don't you lay out for everyone exactly what the Board is being asked to do here? I think there's some confusion on what we can and can't do, and that would be helpful.
Happy to do that. The matter is not for the Board to decide on the validity or the merits behind this proposal, you have essentially three options, but actually you have two options here because this is a tax. You can put it on the election, which is the request that is being made by staff in order to move it forward. The other option is that you can request that the staff provide additional information to you prior to making that determination. However, we are running up on a deadline, so regardless of what the Board votes on today, this will be on the March election, because significant signatures were obtained, and they have been certified, so as a result, it's going forward, and this is merely for the Board to bless.
So, this is mainly a formality, is what you're saying?
It is a formality, yes.
That we just need to, now, if the Board decides, if two of us decide no or yes, will it still move forward?
It will still move forward, yes. It has to, because the signatures were obtained.
Okay. Supervisor Brown.
So, what's the legal purpose for us to even hear this?
So, the legal purpose is, is if it's not a tax and it doesn't need to go to the vote, the Board has the option to just enact it at this time. So, if they were to bring forward an initiative that doesn't have a vote requirement, this is for you to decide whether you want to take it to vote or whether you want it to just enact it. But because of the fact that this actually has a tax, and we have requirements, a tax needs to vote with people, it has to go forward, so you don't call for that exception that this code that we're operating under is created for.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions, Board members?
Yes, thank you. So, a moment ago, you said that it would take a unanimous, but just now, you said the opposite, so I, I had a little confusion in my head.
Thank you for clarification. If the Board is to adopt the staff's recommendation, then it would go by unanimous vote. If the Board votes, votes anything other than unanimous to move it forward, there is another provision in the Election Code that gives, or requires, the election official to still move it forward. So, but again, it's typically recommended that you do move it forward, because that is the intent of the people.
Okay. Our elections officer, would you like to add anything?
I'd just like to add that, you know, there was a lot of time and energy put into this, not only from the circulators of the petition, but my office in general, when we are working very hard to get ready for a presidential primary election in March, so it would be my recommendation to the Board to approve as submitted, please.
All right. With that, I'll open it up to the public.
Good morning, Chair, Board members, Lisa Wright and Lewiston. Before you vote to certify the proposed ballot initiative, Measure A, I want to bring to your attention an error in the format of the petition that went out for circulation, for signature. I know of this requirement because our very election officer, in working on our own initiative, brought it to our attention along with County Counsel Margaret Long. So, when I came across a, an informational piece that was being circulated to the voters by Jim Underwood's office regarding Measure A, I noticed, because it had been pointed out to me by election officer, that there was something missing on it, and actually, as per Mrs. White, Election Code 9104 requires that you have the business or mailing address of your notice of intention when published, along with at least one, but not more than five, of the proponents. So, that was brought to our attention, but when I looked at the informational piece that was being circulated by out of Underwood's office, the notice of intention to circulate petition does not contain the proponent's name nor his business or mailing address. Now, I did see it in the newspaper, so it was kind of weird to me that it wasn't on this notice of intention. So, you know what I said, but this is an informational piece, so let's go to the election office and let's get the actual petition, because we found out, because we did our initiative, that you have to file your petition with the election office, and that has to be the petition that you use when you circulate for signature, so that should match up when they come back. So, we do have our own copies, this is original with the initials or decoder of 111319. And again, on these petitions, and oddly, there are three of them, typically you only can circulate one, so I'm not sure why there are three, there's different page counts on it, but the content of it, other than signature blocks, is the same. Again, there's no mission of the proponent's name as well as his business or personal address. So, my urging to you is that although the signatures, we have not been privy to the verification process, may be indeed valid, that the document that was circulated for signature was not valid. Thus, I urge this Board to table the matter, I differ, and I think we'll have some legal counsel as well, on this being a formality, you are the election Board, you have the authority to certify, to go to ballot. I urge you to table this motion, there is a section, which we investigated further, specifically 9111, that says during the petition, circulation of the petition, or retention of either actions described in subdivision, which is what's for you, the Board of Supervisors may refer the proposed initiative measure to any county agency or agency for a report on any of the following. There are eight things that you can go through and request, and one of those just says that any matters the Board, anything that the Board wants to report on, basically. So, I urge you to table this motion, get secondary opinion from independent counsel, and see if it's worth moving forward for the March ballot or not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisors, Chair, Adrian Keats from Hayfork. Understanding that these signatures have been gathered, and there isn't, short of what I just heard from Lisa, a whole lot else to do about what I feel to be a very inequitable proposal, I would like to just express my sadness for the fact that with all the, the organizations in the community that have worked towards transparency in government, that this was put forth and circulated without any input whatsoever from cultivators, the people who have the actual numbers, the people who have the actual experience and the data, and are living in this world, and actually are affected pretty directly by this. It's a, it's an industry-killing tax, it's, you know, it's patterned somewhat after the Humboldt County tax that they have altered greatly, changing the payment period from the beginning of the year to the end, and it just seems completely unrealistic to try and have a flat tax on an agricultural product in this sense, it really isn't in effective mode. And in the counties where this has been implemented, has been just brutally destructive to the smaller local organizations, and just is leaving nothing behind in its wake but, you know, industrial, corporate sort of entities that can, that have that sort of money to put forward at the beginning of the year, between the state and county licenses and what this tax would be on a 10,000-square-foot cultivation site, it would be $27,000-plus dollars to enter into a cultivation season. And especially this year, with the frailty in our planning and in our licensing at the county level, you would have to pay that money before you even were aware or certain that you would have a cultivation license for that year. There will be a significant reduction in licensed cultivators if this were to pass, and that will have the opposite effect of what our ordinance was intended in all the years that I personally put in, along with the two other main organizations in the county, SAFE and TAA, to draft a fair, functional ordinance to prevent the, the cultural and environmental harms that unregulated cannabis has caused. And if we push people out of this program, we either lose those people and their influence culturally here, and their work in our communities, we lose their money in taxes, because you'll be getting zero, and we perform no benefit to the environment whatsoever. Yeah, I guess I can't really do too much bully-pull-pit, telling you to vote for what here, but I, I just want to express my disappointment in, in, in the drafting of this document itself, and the way that it was completely kept quiet and was not circulated to any cultivators that I'm aware of, and I'm deeply involved in the cultivation community in this county. I believe that if any cultivator had been asked, I would be aware of it. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Tom Balaico, Douglas C. You had a great surprise, I, I'm against voting on this, another formality, the last time we had a formality vote, it got exciting. I've got a lot of personal reasons, professional reasons, why I think this is a bad idea, that's not germane really to what we're here to do today. I think Lisa touched on what was important, in, you know, this isn't like a Newton-Leibniz thing, Mr. Family and I didn't come up with the idea to have a tax at the same time, we did initiative in response to this one. And as Lisa said, we got some communication, which I have odd copies, I didn't know we'd be on the reducing board, but I'm happy to see that. Pointing out the insufficiencies of both our notice in the newspaper, the first time we ran it, that there wasn't a clear distinction between our notice of intention and the ballot title and summary prepared by County Counsel. So, you'll see the back and forth, but we decided to run it again. And then we got some information that the notice of intention that we published wasn't sufficient, because it didn't have either address to go with the name of the proponents. Again, not a big deal, we circulated after that second publication, anyway, already reducing our time by two weeks. It became more of an issue when we see that the petition that was circulated on Measure A has a notice of intention that doesn't have, not only not an address, doesn't have a name. So, I don't care if we all play by the same rules, as long as we all play by the same rules. If the notice of intention has to specifically follow the Election Code 9104 and 9105, for us, then it has to specifically follow it for everybody. If it doesn't have to follow it for everybody, then it should be just something we note in passing. Now, I, I believe in the initiative process, I am against this initiative, but I believe in the process, if you get voters, I think, or enough signatures, I think we should put it to the voters, that's my personal belief. But I think we have to have consistency in our procedure. It, it provides a chilling effect in the democratic process, and I think, I think we're served by better access to the ballot. So, I think you should resolve that, and if it takes a study and scheduling a special meeting to still get to the March ballot, so be it. Thank you.
I'm bringing to your attention that this item, if you approve it, puts the county at risk for litigation. The initiative titled Trinity County Cannabis Tax Measure that's being presented to you as the Board of Elections and the Board of Supervisors for placement on the ballot, March 2020 ballot is deficient, in that the petitions were circulated, were not circulated with the mandatory inclusion of the proponent's name and address. The California Election Code that mandates this are found under Statutes 9104 and I'm bringing to your attention that this item, if you approve it, puts the county at risk for litigation. The initiative titled Trinity County Cannabis Tax Measure that's being presented to you as the Board of Elections and the Board of Supervisors for placement on the March 2020 ballot is deficient in that the petitions were circulated, were not circulated with the mandatory inclusion of the proponent's name and address. The California Election Code that mandates this are found under statutes 9104 and 9108 as follows. 9104 is the notice of intention shall contain the printed name, signature, and business or residence address of at least one, but not more than five proponents, and may include a printed statement not exceeding 500 words in length stating the reasons for the proposed petition. The notice shall be in substantially the following form, it titles Notice of Intention to Circulate Petition, and then what you put under there as it says. Then in 9108, the proponents may commence to circulate the petitions among the voters of the county for signatures by any registered voter of the county after publication of the title and summary prepared by County Council. Each section, that means each petition, section of the petition shall bear a copy of the notice of intention and the title and summary prepared by the County Council. And from what I have seen on the three that were gotten from the elections office, they don't have that. Therefore, I am hereby requesting proof from the elections office via a personal inspection of the actual petition sections, that the proponent's name and address is on each and every petition section, and that in addition, that such proof be submitted to the inspection of the board before a vote is taken to place this initiative on the ballot. Additionally, it's deficient also because there is a, there are two disclaimers that have to be on the petition. One of them cites that the circulator, you could ask if the circulator is paid or not, and the other disclaimer that also has to be on each and every petition is that the proponent could withdraw the petition at any time that they so desire. And that was not on there as well, at least at the ones that we obtained from the elections office. So it's quite illegal and should not move forward. And the elections office should know that, and they should have stepped in and notified the proponents. And if they don't, then they should at least notify the elections board that this is a no-go, the same way that they've done to other initiative proponents, where they stopped them, you didn't do this, you didn't do that correctly, as for instance, Lisa Wright was describing. Thank you very much.
The famous saying that we have now is, what happens to counsel that gives you bad advice? Absolutely nothing. Once again, your counsel has given you bad, inaccurate advice. And one of the things, she said there was three options, there's actually four, which this board has taken before against initiative proponents who actually legally, properly got their initiatives on the ballot, you sued them. You sued them for declaratory relief, and you sued them for hundreds of thousands of dollars. So there is a fourth option, and it would be interesting, because the other thing that hasn't been mentioned is who's the proponent. The person who was sitting right there, Supervisor John Finley, who gave a bogus reason for recusing himself, did not state why he was recusing himself and left. He has such a conflict of interest in this, I don't know why they chose him to give this to, to push it through. It's ludicrous, because you already have three cases in the appellate court right now that Trinity County taxpayers have to pay for, and we're still paying for. And two of them have John Finley's name on them, one of them's election contest, and one of them, you guys aren't supposed to be paying his court and legal fees. The other one also pertains to elections and John Finley, because there's another election contest case that you guys haven't dealt with properly. So this is going to be a fourth case in the appellate court, because you guys won't even bother to do basic due diligence. This is your job, and we're not going to talk about that anymore, because we beat that horse to death. So the other thing, I mean, John Finley, besides being named in appellate court contests, you know, he refused Supervisor Chadwick's grand jury response, and then had John Finley write one, which was a joke, because he was not an election contest contestant in that election in November 2016, but he was from November, or from June 2016. So there should have never, he should have never even touched that one. TAA, John Finley voted for TAA to have money given to them for a case they lost, and you guys paid for their lawyers, and John Finley voted for that. And I'm going to say he did, because you guys keep it secret, and it passed, so I'm just going to say he did. We don't know his relationship with TAA, we don't know if his spouse is in TAA, nobody knows who's in TAA. It's a little secret organization, and so that's a conflict of interest on its face. This whole thing is just business as usual, and just because you guys haven't been indicted doesn't mean you aren't going to for what you've been doing. We are not giving up on our elections, we are not stopping on this, we are going to keep going. You guys will have consequences for not doing what you're supposed to do. And if your counsel wants to tell you otherwise, she'll be sitting there too. She won't be sitting there for what you guys are sitting there for, but it will be other things. You guys need to step up, and we need to keep our elections back.
Anyone else?
Everett Harvey, Weverville. I was hoping I could just keep sitting there, but something popped me out of the chair. The intent of, let me say this, the bit of being able to put things on elections, particularly taxes and stuff, is something that's a cherished feature of our government. And I have to raise my hand, I'm a member of TAA, and yes, it's a very public organization, and you can go to meetings and you can find out who's on it. They're not very publicity-wise, wise people. I actually went out and worked on getting signatures. And as you can imagine, there's a lot of people who say, oh, it's a tax. Absolutely not. The idea of a tax is just formed for some people in Trinity County. A lot of other people said, oh, yeah, I want that. And, oh, yeah, oh, I thought it was already being taxed. You know, that seemed to be the prevalent thing. And the bulk of the people signed when I was working, I only worked an hour or so and got 40-some signatures, which is pretty fast, that's one a minute almost. Anyway, I've got some weird comments. Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? All right, we're back to the board.
Counsel, comments on the petition was done in a proper manner with the lack of name, lack of name and address on the petition?
Well, I haven't reviewed that, so I can't.
So if we wanted that reviewed, we would have to relay this as one of your options and have you look at that?
No, you can move forward on it, it's the last justice review. So you could do that, and then there's mechanisms if there's an issue for us to reason.
Well, we'll, comments from the elections on the lack of name?
I would need to go back and look at the petitions myself. I have staff due to process of verifying signatures on those petitions.
But this would have been part of the verifying the petition was?
It would be part of the verification process.
In the beginning, correct?
Yes. So I'd have to go back to staff and?
So is it your opinion if that was not on there and done properly, that those would be invalid petitions? Or would you like to wait and review this?
I would, I would need to refer to Election Code and double-check to see exactly what it says in code first, rather than just on hearsay. And I would examine the code and examine the petitions, and then make a determination.
I'm prepared to make a motion. Thank you. Well, I don't know about the rest of you, but I would like a little bit more information on the question that was raised, and maybe take a break for you guys to review that, so we could feel a little more knowledgeable on this item that was raised.
Is this something that you could, that both of you could look at today, and we could get back to it later today, or is this something that you're going to need more time than that?
So looking at it can be done today, looking at, or analyzing it, and some research on it may take a little bit longer, but we can continue a preliminary look at it. I'm concerned about that.
I agree.
At least verifying the petition is signed and is claiming it's not, so at least you can see. So we could, let's see, it's 10:20, 10:30. We could, would, an hour, half hour, if we took a break?
Look at chat.
Yeah, I would say an hour.
So if you guys met us back here at 11:30, I could work, pull a adjourn, and we'll take a recess until 11:30, just to verify that table.
We could also do our closed session.
Yeah, I'm sorry, well, we'll leave Margaret. Do we need Margaret for close? We'll go into closed session and come back, so. Thank you both, but?
Supervisor Chadwick did have a motion.
I was going to make a motion that we actually tabled this, because I think that we need to have the opportunity for it to be verified and checked, and that it comes back, even if it's in the form of a special Board of Supervisors. We do have a 2 o'clock this afternoon, we still have a closed session, and one more quick remaining item today, but I believe that it would be better suited to be, even if it was a standalone item, that we have that. So make a motion that we tabled this, and till it can be verified, and that we set a date today for a special Board of Supervisors to continue this conversation.
Would you, we have two options, we could come back at 11:30 and see what they discover, and then go from there. Because we may not need a special meeting, and then we can look at a special meeting if need be at 11:30.
We have a motion, and we have a second?
We didn't quite, I asked her a question on her motion, and I think?
She's asking for me to resend it, so we can have it at 11:30. So I'll resend it.
Just to see what information they do find, because we may not need it, but we might. So does that work?
Resend it.
Okay. Supervisor Chadwick, does that work?
Yeah, that's fine. We could probably, well, they'll find out.
Yeah.
As quickly as they can, and then we'll go from there.
All right, so if you find out something earlier, you know, we won't leave, we'll hang out if we get this other business done, so. All right, so we will table this item until 11:30, when we have more information, come back to the board. All right. Can someone allow supervisors back in rooms, I was going to hear a point line. We do have one more item that we could go for. What, what? We do have one more item on our board schedule that's of interest, so we're not completely closing. It's up to you, just wanted to make sure you do that. Okay, board members, we had some information that came up that we're having further looked into, and we'll come back to this item. 4.2 at 11:30, so in the meantime, so you'll have to leave at 11:30. In the meantime, we'll carry on with regular business. Okay, moving back to 4.1. We are going to go back into handling the rest of county business, item 4.1, so we do need to bring the volume down in the room. Thank you. 4.1, set the Board of Supervisors meeting schedule for calendar year 2020. Since we, it's not a, any new member coming in on January, I thought we could look at this, so we can set our schedules.
What's good?
Couple of things I'd just like to highlight. What are they? Couple of things we've done in the past that is listed, so something to consider. Typically, around the Fourth of July, we do not have the first Tuesday as a board meeting. The other item to consider, if I can see it. We also adjusted our schedule for NACO travel. That was March, so for those board members who might be going to NACO in the late February, early March, that puts them, if not missing a board meeting on March 3rd, I think last time, we bumped it a day. And we did the same for the same circumstances for July 21st, we bumped that date to July 22nd roughly. So something to consider for all of you, although it doesn't specify that on the calendar. Comments, questions? I just want to get your feedback first.
What's good? So you said we don't meet on the first Tuesday in July, but this is on here as we need?
That's correct. It was, it was put in anyway.
You're recommending changing that, you're highlighting the fact that that's put back in.
Correct. Yeah, thank you. And I wanted to point out those two NACO travel days, because you could have, if left as is, you could have at least two board members unable to attend this board meeting. If you bumped it a day, that might change things, but it's all up to everybody. That's what we've done in the past.
So has staff not been aware of this? Why are these problems coming up now, when this is being presented to us?
Sometimes it is presented to us this way, and we adjust accordingly.
Does staff need this time to take care of their work?
No.
It'd be the direction of the board if you want to remove, you know, the July, well, normally, the Fourth of July, the first Tuesday falls within that week, we're in this one, it's after the second week, so we put it on there just as the board has that option if they want to have that. But we can easily remove anything the board would like, or move them around.
And we can make that decision when it gets closer to the time.
Well, you could do that as well, but at least people can adjust schedules and know their schedule. Supervisor Chadwick, did I see that you hit the comment or no?
No. I just, glad to see that you accommodated the WIR conference with NACO. Thank you for doing that.
And the rest of the conferences in general are listed below as usual. Board members thoughts? Okay, comments for the public? All right. Do we use the board's pleasure to adopt as-is or make the adjustments?
Proof as presented?
All right. One second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, so moved. All right, moving on to closed session. 5.1, Government Code Section 549, 54.5, Conference Real Property Negotiators, ATN 007-300-24, Agency Negotiator Rick Tippett, Negotiating Party Caltrans, Under Negotiation Price in Terms of Payment. Item 5.2, Government Code Section 549, 54.5, Public Employee Valuation, County Administrative Officer. Anyone wishing to speak to these closed session items? All right. All right. We will leave it closed. Where we start? I'll report out after this item. All right, I assume Supervisor Brown and Supervisor Trivier still remain outside. And we will go back to item 4.2, I think. Are you joining us?
Yeah.
You've already recused yourself. But do you need your phone?
What can I do?
Oh, okay, no.
So I got some more clarity with my FPPC letter. And there is allowance for me to speak as a member of the public regarding my own personal business interests, personal properties. So I will be sitting in the other side of the audience for this discussion.
And I just want to make sure the board's aware that this is not typically allowed. But because he is the sole owner of his business, there is a very limited exception to the rules which FPPC did note in his letter. So I don't want it to be a general practice or to think this is a general practice, but there's a limited exception because he is the sole owner.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. All right, moving back to 4.2. What did we find out on a question that wasn't raised by members of the public?
So I'm happy to respond to that. I did have an opportunity to meet with our elections official. I did, let me back up a little bit so I can go through it in entirety. I did have a chance to review the letters that were provided by Mr. Blanco that were written by elections officials and one of them does have my comments on it as well regarding the issue of having the business address or mailing address. In reviewing it, it's clear that the election official did not render a decision on that. She merely asked Mr. Blanco why he did not include the business address on the published version of his notice of intent. And his response was that we're just going to sign our signatures and he can figure it out later. So there was no official position provided by our election official on that issue. I did have a chance to review the notice of intent to circulate petition. It does have a address on it and it's both a P.O. box and a hard address. I did have an opportunity to review the published version of it. It does have an address on it. And I did have an opportunity to compare the initiative measure that was circulated for signatures. And I compared it to three state examples that they did provide that, and ours is consistent with what they have as well. And so I'm comfortable moving forward.
Okay, board members, questions?
Now, just out of curiosity, is this state at the board or does it go back to the public?
So does the three state example?
No, this because we adjourned only to get more information. Is the public allowed to comment or have any input at this time? Or is it only state at the board level?
That's the chair's pleasure.
Okay, thank you.
Does the state law require a signature or a name in a? Even though you're saying the examples did not show that, but does the law require a name and an address?
It says Election Code 9108 and it does not specifically say, which is why we then compared to what the state has interpreted it by looking at their examples.
Okay, Ms. White, I have a question to you. You asked why to one party, why they didn't have the sign or the name and the address on. Did you ask the other party that?
Just to clarify, the other party had it on. The one that submitted by Mr. Finley had the address on it.
Oh, on the same document?
Same document, correct. Yes.
It's just not, or not on the petition?
So I believe, and I am reviewing the documents, is that the one that was submitted by Mr. Blanco had it on the notice of intent, but not on the published version of it. The one Mr. Finley submitted had it on both.
So would both of those, as you described, been okay legally?
So the question was, would the one submitted by Mr. Blanco have been okay, had they submitted signatures? I don't have an opinion on that at this time. I'd have to analyze that.
Okay.
But the one Mr. Finley had did have it on.
Okay. Did you have a question for Shannon?
No, she clarified that it's a different scenario. I thought it was the same scenario.
Did you have a comment?
I was just going to confirm that we have not received a petition from Mr. Blanco and Ms. Wright at the moment to even make a determination on it for its sufficiency or insufficiency.
Okay. Supervisor Chapman, did I hear that you'd like?
Well, I was, as a matter of process and procedure, I wasn't clear in this circumstance where we took a break. If it was then reopened to the public and apparently it's up to your choice.
Big pressure.
My recommendation is in a case of election, the importance of the election, that the public.
For sure. So since we have new information, I will open it back up to the public if anyone wishes to comment.
Diane Richards-Hayforth, can you please ask specifically, on the notice of intention, which must be included on each petition section? They have to be identical and be included. Did it have John Finley's name and address on it? It says it must include the notice of intention and his name and address has to be on the notice of intention. Was it included on those petition sections? Not like the one that was published, not the one that was given to them, but on those petition sections with the signatures, was his name and address on there? Ask that question directly, please, including the two disclaimers that have to be there where the circulator is, where their signature is. It has to be that they can withdraw it and also can you, you can ask the circulator if they're paid. I believe those were on there as well. All these things have to be on the state says this is how it has to be. So you need to ask that direction, that directly. Was it on the petitions received with the signatures? These are called petition sections. Each one that they receive with like 700 signatures, does each one have his name and address plus the two disclaimers? Please ask that directly, thank you.
Any other comments before we ask questions?
Morning,下午, Chair members of the board, Tom Belenko of Douglas City. So, little bit of confusion going on, I understand. You start that initiative process by filing a notice of intention, subject to Election Code 9104, with the elections clerk. It goes to county council for ballot title and summary. When that comes back, you have to publish that in the newspaper, both the notice of intention and the ballot title and summary. Once you have proof of publication, you have to format and begin circulating the petitions. Now, per this email that I gave you from our elections official, quote, "As per Election Code 9104, the notice of intention shall contain the business or mailing address of at least one of the proponents." Okay, that is accurate, that is what 9104 says. It's not the notice of intention and the name and address of the proponent. The notice of intention is and includes the name and address of the proponents. Section 9108 says, "Each section of the petition shall bear a copy of the notice of intention and the title and summary prepared by county council." So if you put those two definitions together, the notice of intention shall include the name and address and the section of the petition shall include the notice of intention. That means the section of the petition shall include the name and address. The petition does not include the name and address. We're not talking about what was published. We're not talking about what was turned in. We're talking about what the law requires is in the petition that is circulated for signature. And that was incomplete. If it's a non-issue, it's a non-issue for everybody. It cost us two of the four weeks we had to get signatures dealing with this issue. So if it's an issue for us, it's an issue for him. If it's not an issue for him, why am I getting these emails? Thank you.
Anybody else?
Kate Graves from Lewiston, thank you for giving us an opportunity to clarify and explain what your county council and your elections officer should have but didn't. With, when you read code, you have to read more than just one little section because there are things that are mentioned in one code. Suppose what that is required for ballots. Everything that's required for a ballot isn't in one code. You have to follow it all. So I could cite you code that says this. But what happens is you omit evidence and that's what your county council did. She omitted what she should have just told you. What Mr. Blanco just read you is California code and it is correct. So it's game play and semantics, but it's important. And, and as your council, this is your council giving you legal advice for you to act on. And I hope you guys keep this in mind, what she just did. Thank you.
Everett Harvey Weaverville again. I have a strange feeling, so I'm just going to try to keep my words very short. The intent of this method of getting proposals voted upon is very clear. There is a lot of questions about where were names and addresses and stuff. And it's not clear to me that every little signature has to have that name and address right by it. You know, this proponent. To me, there seems to be a lot of concern about minor details, but really the issue is whether the intent is for people to be able to vote on things that they think they should have a chance to vote on, taxes mainly. And I think that's overshadows a lot of this bickering about little details. Thank you.
John Brower from Junction City. And I think it's really important to get this right. And this has raised some really big questions. There's another big election coming up in November. I want to encourage the board to either not allow this, especially in light of these new questions. It seems like Mr. Blanco's and Mr. Finley's initiatives were treated very differently. And I think you need to say no to this or at least continue the matter until these details can be better sorted out. Words matter, especially in something as important as this. So I encourage you to either vote no on this and let both initiatives have a fair and equal chance at the electorate in November if they can get on the ballot in a proper way. Thank you.
I guess my understanding is that the petition that's being circulated to have signatures is supposed to have John Finley's name on it. Is that correct?
We'll answer all the questions after.
You know, I'm tired of this. You know, my questions are based on your answers anyway.
Can Margaret repeat herself?
So if, if his, if his name has to, I asked, I got copies of the petition that was sent around yesterday and it didn't have John Finley's name on any of it. There were, his name wasn't anywhere on any of the paperwork I've got. I got, I got the whole list that was sent out and his name was not on any of the stuff. So when she says it's on there, I like, I like to know where it was because I didn't get it on my copy.
And John, I have a question for you. Do you say you received it yesterday?
I went, I, I went yesterday and I asked to get a copy of the petition that was sent around for signatures because of today's.
So you went to the elections office?
I went to the elections office and it was given to me from the elections office.
Thank you.
And the Chair of Board, Lisa Wright-Lewiston. Just to reiterate, I did the same thing that John did, getting the actual petition form from the election office. It has Lisa Cody with the date on the 13th and we received that. This should be, I don't know why there's three, that's kind of a whole nother separate question because it should be one. But the content is, is identical other than the signature blocks, right? The notice of intention to circulate petition is included and the notice says, notice is hereby given by the person whose name is appear hereon of their intention to circulate a petition within the county of Trinity for the purpose of qualifying for the ballot, an initiative measure entitled Commercial Cannabis Cultivation and Cannabis Wholesale and Retail Activity Tax? There is no name. Who is the undersigned? My argument is if this does not have a valid person attached to it, it's not valid. And, you know, I believe fully, absolutely in the democratic process and the people wanted to certainly get that tax. But you can't put it on invalid form and expect that it's going to go to, to the election. We had in emails from both Ms. Long and Ms. White indicating that we didn't have a space, a line between two sections, which isn't required in code, because it may create confusion among the voters. You don't think not knowing who is circulating this and who the proponent is doesn't create confusion? Please. It's time to put a stop to this like shell game that goes on and the misinformation from your own council. Seek outside legal counsel. Table this, please. Thank you.
Lisa? Would you, can we look at those?
Yeah.
Oh, do you have them the same?
I have three. I have a one of eight, one of four, one of six. And they have a different number of signature blocks. I would like to go back though. Those are originals and I didn't have my legal site paper to copy it.
So is this what she's handing to us?
I don't know what she's handing us. This is, that's the official one that I'm providing to you.
Okay.
I would assume that ours is official as well because we got it from the election office with it denoted by an election staff person. But I don't know why there's three.
Okay. This is Margaret's, I'm going to keep that so it doesn't get confused. Oh, I would want to see them too. Would you see these?
I would love for you to look at the three state initiatives if you'd like to see how they've interpreted.
So they're. Are you guys done seeing these?
All right.
How many pages are on the one that Ms. Long provided to you? Ours has one of four, one of six, one of eight. And would that be made available publicly and why it is different than the rest? And does it contain his name?
Five of six, it's.
Does it contain his name and address?
I haven't read it yet. We've already had testimony that didn't provide his name.
Oh, okay. I couldn't quite tell from what she said whether the actual petition she was putting together.
So do, just from a procedural matter, do we want to listen to the rest of public comment before we dig into this? Or do we?
No, we can continue with public comment, Lisa. We won't keep your documents, so we'll keep your pile here.
Okay.
All right, so. Anybody else before we shut public comment down?
Chairman Brown, Berg Ranch. I'm so eager to feel like I can contribute a financial piece of the cannabis business. I have been operating for a while, back into the county in a way that the county feels like is valuable and the way that the public impression on growers feels like it is valuable and a crucial symbiotic piece of how the cannabis industry and Trinity County residents can find common ground. It's, it's exciting that we feel like we're close to this and it's also concerning that there's a lot of confusion around, around it when something so important, I'd love to see clearly executed with, you know, zero percent confusion and fully vetted. So I think it's safe to say that, you know, the growers are very eager to contribute in a financial way to the county so that the residents that might not understand the existing contributions we have done or the ongoing contributions we do, so they can feel a sort of concrete validation on our financial representation from this industry in the form of a tax that goes to the general. of a tax that goes to the general fund. So I just urge that as cleanly as possible that this tax process can be brought to the ballot, so that people will have the chance to vote on one or two measures. I believe it would be a very valuable step forward for the growers, and the county, and the members of the public that are disgruntled with some of the ongoing turmoil and conversations that have prevented this financial asset from coming in to the county coffers. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else for public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll bring him back to the board. So, well, I'm going to ask my board members, any other questions, clarifications?
Yeah, counsel, the one you gave, you said there was an address on this?
Yeah, I apologize. What, pulled up what you're talking about, sorry.
The petition that you gave.
No, I did not see that. What I said was there was an address on the notice of intent to circulate petition, and then on the affidavit or the publication of the notice of intent. Those both have the address on them.
So the argument, how do you feel about the argument that the notice of intention shall be printed on here, which it is, but it doesn't have an address or a name on them? That that would be part of the notice of intention?
So my response to that, and again, it would mean half an hour of research, so I thought we could use some more time to research it. But my response to that would be, in looking how the state interprets it, which ultimately is the one that makes the law, the way that they interpret it is interpreted is that that just means the body of the text of the body of the notice of intent. And if you look at the three examples provided, that is what they did. They did not put the name and address of the circulator. So, I'm sorry, the creator. So we are very, we are consistent with how the state has done it and how the state has interpreted it. And again, they are the ones that wrote the law, so they would be the supply that we would look to for guidance on that.
Can I see this? Thank you. So in time to study and look deeper into this, how much time do we have before this ... At this point, it's your opinion, which you stated earlier, that it doesn't matter if we vote for or against it, this will go on the March ballot?
Eighty-eight days, is that, I don't know how close we are to that. Are you asking if you have some time to consider it further?
Yes.
I don't have a calendar. I'm trying to do the election.
Well, I don't have a calendar in front of me either at the moment, but there is, well, an elections calendar. But there are E-minus days, which is election day minus. But in order for a measure to go on the ballot, I have to post the notice of election that it's going to be on the ballot. I have to give a time period sufficient for arguments for and against. I have to give a time period for rebuttals, and then there's a public viewing period. So truly, today is kind of a drop, I don't want to say a drop dead date, I mean, we could probably go a week, but if it went any further than a week, there's a very limited chance that this measure could make it to ballot.
What about even tomorrow? If the board felt they needed more time?
So I guess by questioning, what would be the board's intent? The election official is the one that makes the determination of whether it's valid. The board doesn't have any say or control over that. So just to, again, I'm just trying to figure out what you're looking for.
Just to make sure we have everything that's been raised in front of us and determined solidly, that before we weigh in on this. I mean, technically, you're right, we could all vote no, and it's still move forward, if I hear you correctly.
So, yeah, and I know that we're putting you in a little unfair spot here today, because you had a half an hour to study this. But your initial discussion was, is that no matter what way we go, it goes on the ballot, if the election official deems it...
That's my understanding. I've never had a board or council, a special district I worked with, not move it forward. So I would, I would allow it to go a little further, but that is what code says, yes.
So I guess with two thoughts in your, if you want to look, they do not leave a spot on any of those to put a name on it.
That's Margaret's.
That's Margaret's. Then let me take a look to see if this is any different. I'm not sure. One of my issues today is that we don't have the other side with their counsel to make a rebuttal, to make a case to this clear intent of the signatures to put it on the ballot and get people a Trinity. I am a little confused of why we recommend it to one side to put it on and get it to the other, and that worries me.
I want to be clear on that.
Make me understand that.
What we had, and what the email that I reviewed stated was the recommendation that the name and address be put on the publication of it, which Mr. Finley did do. So it would have been consistent with what Mr. Finley had done.
But there was no, no email stating, how did I get to be on top of the counsel here? But there's no, there's no email stating that it had to be on the petition?
No, they were referring to election code 9104, which is the notice of intent and the publication of notice of intent. So the, and again, she didn't say one way or the other, she just asked why he hadn't, when Mr. Finley had.
Okay, so then it comes to the fact that the law says you must have the notice intention to circulate on the petition, where one counsel says that that means you have to have the name, and you're stating that since the state does not put that on their examples, that the state doesn't interpret that. Have I got that pretty clear?
Am I correct? Yes.
I would like to ask a question. How much will having this initiative on the ballot, low and high, a cost range?
I don't know the specifics of that, but it, since we already have an election, it's one race on the ballot, so it wouldn't be that, but much additional cost. There's some printing space on the ballot, there's some printing in sample ballot booklets, but that would be it.
Would there be any reason that if this tax initiative failed to get on the March ballot, that it would preclude it from being on the November ballot?
Are you talking this one in specific, or otherwise?
No, just any one, but including this one. If this did not make the March ballot, would it preclude it from going on in November? Would they have to start over?
I feel the question is a little unclear. So if the ballot was found insufficient, then they could start over, they would have to start over, and then it could go to a future election. There's not any time, there's not a specific, this petition, this intention for this measure, if the signatures weren't turned in in time, you have 180 days to circulate your petition, to gather your signatures. This individual gathered their signatures in less time than that, they submitted their petitions to my office, we did the verification and bring it to the board, and it was in time for the March ballot. Another petition is being circulated at the moment, it was inherent time, it will go to the November ballot.
I'm not asking that. I'm saying if this was delayed, and we did not have a special board of supervisors meeting in order to correct whatever deficiencies in the concerns are, maybe there aren't any deficiencies, maybe the concerns are invalid, I'm asking if for some reason this measure did not make it on the March, and those deficiencies, if there are any concerns, are met, would this same one be able to then go, or would all those signatures have to be regathered?
It is my interpretation of the California Constitution. I have certified this petition, I presented it to the board per election code, that I have certified it, basing for your acknowledgement that you're receiving this certification, based on my requirements of code. With the advisement of counsel, and looking at the California Constitution Code, since this ballot measure has been deemed sufficient in my office, it will go to the March ballot.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions?
I just want to, I know I've read this before, but I think it's very important. It's our mission statement for Trinity County. With transparency, and integrity, Trinity County works responsibly to create and maintain a safe and healthy quality of life for all citizens. I think one of the underlying challenges that Trinity County faces is that rules are enforced differently amongst different people. Now, that may be a perception that is not accurate, but it is a perception that has been an undercurrent for a long time. The cannabis farmers, is my opinion, they do want to participate in the tax. I, however, would feel more comfortable with tabling this. I have no problem seeing it come forward quickly, but I think that the issues that have been raised, our elections are not something that I can just say, well, I feel mostly okay. I am not satisfied with the fact that the signature wasn't on the petition. I have not had any time. I feel like you haven't had enough time. I would like to table it to where there could be enough adequate time that I'd be researched. So I will make a motion, again, to table this for a short period of time, that there's adequate investigation done, and that that specific concern is addressed.
I have a quick question before her motion. So given what was raised in the public, by the public, seems like there's a discrepancy in what they were told, and cost them some time to gather signatures. Seems to be a separate item compared to what is being brought to us today for this item.
Do you want to respond to that?
If you can. Or if you feel that it...
And I just have the emails reviewed. The first email related to the second petition that came forward, I was involved in, in terms of, there was a concern regarding the blending of the notice of intent and then the county council's summary. So it wasn't clear where one began and one ended. We did seek outside assistance in making a determination that that would probably, if we were to be asked, the likely outcome would be that that would be certified, so we provided advance notice to the individual, just so they could correct the error. The second one, which they did, and then went forward to get signatures, the second issue came forward was that they didn't include the address on the second publication of the notice of intent. And again, that was, she had just asked why they hadn't done that, and they appeared to say they were going to continue forward, and there was no further discussion on that. That's not inconsistent with anything that was provided to any other candidates. The documents we received from Mr. Finley both had the address on them. So there was nothing inconsistent about what was provided by Ms. White's office.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So, Bobby, you...
My motion's done.
Okay, do I have a second? I'll ask a clarification. When were you looking at a date specific for this to be tabled?
Well, my understanding that it's a drop dead, so I'd say probably Friday.
Okay. So your motion would include a Friday, table it to Friday?
I don't know what the availability of county council and election operation or what is.
Yeah, I don't have availability, I'm presenting at a conference the rest of the week, but...
I don't have availability on Friday.
Okay, so I'm...
We have eighty-eight days before the election. The question is, is there any availability this week?
Do I have a second, so we can have this discussion?
Yes, I'll second for discussion, yes. So, so the basic question to me on delaying it is wanting to allow the petitioner's side to get counsel. Two, to have our counsel have the opportunity to look into a greater depth. I'm not sure if that's needed, that that would be available to, but also that this needs to be done this week.
Right.
And, or including Saturday, I guess, but... So is there any time available this week?
You wouldn't have me, but I could find some for my office to present.
And again, Margaret, if I heard you correctly, what was raised would not have an impact to what we're discussing today.
So just to clarify your question, if we hypothetically were fine that they don't believe it was sufficient, would that impact what we're doing today? Is that the question?
What was raised, if it would have an impact to what we're supposed to vote on today? I mean...
Again, that's not within your jurisdiction to make a determination about whether the election official has done, has correctly certified this petition and approved the signatures. So, no, you would not have any authority over her to tell her she did it wrong.
Right, okay. Okay, so, did you have your questions or stated?
Well, if we do this, we have to do the logistics. It changes how I vote if we're delaying this into where it goes off to a later day. If it's logistically impossible to do it this week, that...
So tomorrow?
The next week, I'm not available the rest of the week. I'm out of time in the meeting.
Okay. What is the exact date, the eighty-eight days? Do you want to take a quick break, so we can determine that?
Well, it's not eighty-eight days prior to an election. I need more time than that, so that I can get those publications that I spoke about in time for people to write their arguments for and against, and rebuttals, and the proper time period for public viewing.
It's the fifteenth of February, 2020, 12:09 PM.
Can we...
Yes, ma'am, I was finding out eighty-eight day three.
It's a little, not quite as cut and dry as eighty-eight, if I hear our elections official...
Correct. E-minus eighty-eight means election day minus eighty-eight days, so that's eighty-eight days prior to the election day, which is March third, 2020.
Okay. So this week seems to be problematic. Do you need a moment, so the board can make a decision on their vote, if what your last drop dead date would be? We can take a break, a few minutes?
No, because I've already done research on this. You know, a deadline to get into the newspaper is Friday, for the following Wednesday newspaper. We only have a circulation once a week, so it makes it a little difficult. If we had a paper that circulated daily, we'd have more opportunities to get it into the paper. But in order for it to get to the paper, and have that proper amount of time, and the time period for me to put my sample ballot booklet together, get it out to print, to get to the voters, we're there.
Okay, got it. All right, board members, any adjustment to the motion, if I called a question?
So let me ask a question. If this motion fails, do we have the opportunity to make another motion?
No. No, you don't want to fail. You'd have to do a subsequent before the vote is...
So I'll do a subsequent, that we allow this to go as is.
Okay. Am I allowed to second?
Given...
Yeah, given there's...
Yes, you can.
All right, I'll second it. All right.
Some discussion?
Discussion.
So the things that I are trying to look at here is that, yeah, I would probably prefer to put it off if we have the opportunity to do a little more sit-down research. But the intent of the people that signed this was to move forward, and it's pretty tough to overlook that. The concerns that the name is not on there is very valid to me in the argument, but the state not putting that in their ballot sways me quite a bit the other way. So with that, I would...
Point of order, the state procedure that governs state measures begins at election code 9000. It doesn't require a notice of intention.
That is not point of order, and you know that.
Okay, apples and oranges, though. The rules for the state ballot are different for a local measure.
So with, with that, from the peanut gallery, I will, I will still stand on that since we are not in a court of law and we don't have the expertise or the time to do that, to make that decision. And that will be up to a judge at some point. With that, I would support moving forward as is, since that's the process, that's what's gonna happen anyway.
Any other further comment on the subsequent before I call the vote?
I would just say that if you know history, you try to avoid the same mistakes. And this is an opportunity to move forward in a new direction. And I think that the citizens of Trinity County are ready to embrace transparency and integrity. And I think that anything that identifies itself in a way that this is happening where it's brought to us short notice, you know, back to July, I think of 2017, I feel like I'm repeating myself. The voters will have the opportunity to understand the back, this backstory. I think will also put the initiative in a negative light going forward. So it's too bad.
I would concur with you in terms of I wish we had something since seventeen, or even eighteen. There were some technicalities. I wish we could have a little more time to vet this question out a little more. We're really pushed into a corner from a time standpoint. And ultimately, it will be, even if we all voted no today, it would still go on the ballot. And it will ultimately be up to the voters on this. So with that, I'm gonna call the question. I have a motion to second to have it moved forward. Please pull the board.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Grows?
Yes.
Supervisor Chavis?
No.
All right. First one.
Question?
Yeah, it didn't pass.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Taylor, you're right.
You're right, thank you.
Please state that, please state the outcome of the motion, it wasn't stated.
It did not pass.
Thank you.
So, sorry, was it, so the subsequent, do you wanna restate your motion, please? And I believe Keith was your second.
That we table this until there's significant time to research it adequately for the concerns that were brought forward.
Okay. And there doesn't seem to be anything this week that everyone's available at. So with that, I believe Supervisor Grows was the second on that?
Yes, I was.
Please pull the board.
Supervisor Grows?
No.
Supervisor Chavis?
Yes.
Supervisor Morris?
No.
So with that, it will still... Move forward?
We've done our diligence.
Yeah, we've done, yeah, we'll provide this...
All right.
Do we have anything left?
I do have to report out.
Not into there?
No, that was it. All right, so I had a five point one that was in closed session. Finalization of the right-of-way agreement, highway agreement with Caltrans. Passed five to zero. Five point two, no action, no direction was given. All right, with that, we will see you in December. Happy Thanksgiving, and thank you everyone for your comments. The meeting is adjourned.